Today is Monday, March 26, 2018, in our public county commissioners court order. Then we have Howie Bass with the first bachelor's certificate of indication. So please stand and remain seated.
Oh God, the events this week remind us of your grace, sacrifice and speakable aid on our behalf. And as we receive your grace, may we be givers of that grace. In his name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, a flag that is to be Texas, one state under God, one individualism.
First thing I'm going to do is give people the minutes from March 12 to 28 through Potter County Police Department in the March 13. Any changes or requests? Not so many. Number two, vouchers to consider an actual approval of the title of voucher across the county office of March 7, 2018, March 21. Check number one, check number 179527 through 179735, and wire number 1051 through 1056, an amount of $1,583,207.03.
Okay, have a motion. I have a second. I do have a question, Judge, in front of me. Carrie, page six of 21, check number 179605, maybe a little 120,000 and a little bit changer. Is that the tiers? What does that mean?
That is emergency damage.
I'll share. Good. Thank you.
Number three, insurance report to recognize insurance fund or cake. Could not be disclosed, which is why we to make a note that she did transfer 10,000,000 from the Texas class to Emerald National Bank. Any questions on that? So recognize number four, insurance report to recognize monthly investment. Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, this morning at Emerald National Bank we're earning 1.80, and we have $20,171,865.40 in our general fund. Texas class we're earning 1.79, with $10,677,408.44. And Tex pool we're earning 1.60, with $404,419.49. Tex pool prime is 1.77, with $16,126,364.60. So our total funds in general this morning are $47,380,057.39. And just to give you a heads up, on Friday we did receive $854,000 from 9/11 for their portion of each SO grade.
So recognize number five, budget calendar fiscal year 2019. Review those budget calendars, maybe what first. Fiscal year 2019. There it is. That time again, I'm so excited.
I've just put together some dates. We just change, we're actually there to, in July, we have our budget report show, which we officially do it on Monday afternoon, after commissioners reported on Tuesday. But thanks to the band here on Thursday and Friday, since we have like 40 days, and all those days might be Tuesday, you know, and you chase something, but I check your calendars and see how much they're all.
And Carrie, I know that I do have a conflict on the 27th for sure. So I don't know if Wednesday, Thursday, or Tuesday, Wednesday is better, but anyway.
Going to be gone too, on Thursday and Friday. Family reunion on that. I'm planning to go.
Yeah. So does Tuesday work better to do that? And then the other date, we typically have these meetings catch right here, and if we have to have that on Thursday, of the days that fit into the timing, we're either the 6th, which probably doesn't have any judges and commissioners meeting that day, or the 14th, that's the judge who saw, or the public prosecutor that was on Tuesday night. Which would be 14, which would be actually 18 or 17.
Obviously, generally.
Yeah, I know the chamber is always a, that conflicts with your calendar, Commissioner.
Well, I can do that too, best my birthday. Oh. It's nothing to do, yeah, that's fine by me. I don't care.
It's your birthday.
No, it's okay.
Okay, so that's good. So just that one change here, 23rd and 24th, 7th, 26th, 27th.
And then Carrie, will you mail this out with a electronic version of this?
Yes.
We don't need to go in that, we just need to recognize our roster. Okay. Okay, number six, indigent defense select committee to hear an update from the work of the county's indigent defense select committee, John Field.
Not accustomed to being single digits on the chairman of the city. I'm surprised. Well done this morning. Well, we thought it's probably high time that we got an update on what's been going on with the, what turned, when it started out to be Potter County Public Defender's Office Select Committee. But there's been a lot that's been going on, and I believe that committee was first appointed in December. We've been meeting once a month since. And I think maybe calling it the Public Defender's Office Select Committee was maybe not the right move to take originally, because that kind of created the impression that the, that the end result of this select committee work was, was going to be the creation of a Public Defender's Office, and that's probably yet to be determined. We still have a lot of work to go before we can determine whether or not that's justified, or if there's a better option or alternative out there that consists the county or counties, as the case might be, in providing indigent defendants that can afford to pay for their own defense, helping them in providing them a good, effective legal counsel as they were brought before the judge. Now, we've, we started off really, I think, probably trying to meet a deadline that we didn't really need to worry about. If you've got a chance to look at the feasibility document that was in your agenda package this week, you'll see that there was about $6 million dangling out there for the county or counties to use. And I'm saying county or counties because we've looked at both Potter County only, and we've looked at a regional organization that would involve both Armstrong, Potter, and regional counties. But there's funding out there through the Texas Indigent Defense Commission that would pay for 50% of the cost over the first four years of its existence if the county or counties decide to create a Public Defender's Office. Lot of money out there, and the deadlines that would rush to meet was first of March 9th date, where we had to submit a letter of intent that said we intend to come back in May to submit a formal application of funding. And so we were all primed, ready to go with the letter of intent by that March 9th date. And as we saw that we were just kind of running like a train without any brakes towards a deadline, we thought better to step back just a moment and get this opportunity to be there every year. And to really look very hard at what was being done, why it was being done, what really needed to be done, because in the course of four months now, we've looked at three or four different alternatives, and really haven't found one that's the perfect fit for the situation that you have here. And the situation that you have here was kind of outlined in a letter that, the draft letter that we had ready to go to the TIDC on March 9th. There are four areas of concern that the members of this committee saw with the indigent defense system in Potter, Randall, and Armstrong County. Now, keep in mind that y'all did a great job in putting together this committee, because it's not all people who go, we need a PDO. You also have defense attorneys there that go, oh, just a second, that's our livelihood. You got the judges, you got private citizens, so you got a mixed bag of opinions, perspectives on this particular situation. And so the fact that they've come to at least some consensus as to four critical areas of concern is really good, because they all can agree on these things regardless of what their professional background is and how they view the indigent defense system here in the counties. First of all is cost. Cost is critical, you all understand that, but it's not just about, we don't want to spend a lot of money, we want to make sure that we're getting some value for the money that we're spending. So even if you're spending a little bit more, say that you do want to go the full PDO route, you better know that you're getting commensurate value back for the money that's being invested in that system. So that was one, supervision. The committee members saw that there was a dearth of supervision over the attorneys that are providing these defense services. There's no way to keep them accountable, call them tasked for not seeing their, their clientele, or not providing anything other than take the plea kind of defense. And, and they recognize that, and that there's some improvements that need to be made there. Overall, quality. They think that the, the system right, as it is right now, if it could go a lot further in providing quality services from beginning to end. And then finally, we do have a bit of an issue here, and it seems kind of contrary to talk about PDO when we're talking about this other issue, but you've got a diminished supply of defense attorneys in the three county area. Diminishing, and that a lot of those guys are getting old, and they're going to want to go fishing here pretty soon, and there's not a lot of young people that are going to come in to fill the void. So there's a situation there that has to be attended to. Now, through this four-month process, we've gotten all sorts of free work thrown at us. It's been great. That, that study that you looked at in your agenda package was put together by TIDC, and it's, it's a good, it was not intended to be the end-all deal. It was intended to be a discussion starter, and it's done that very well. We've had some economic analysis given to us from another consultant that's helped to move this discussion down the field just a little bit further up. And we've also got some opportunities now that we might want to take advantage of in doing a more thorough analysis of what the system lacks today, before we try to move forward with either a MAC, a managed assignment case system, or a PDO, or doing what we're doing today with a little bit more oversight, or some tweaks and bandages here and there. But there, there's, we have to get more information in before we can, and I'm talking "we," when I say "we," colloquially, that's the committee, before we can decide which direction to go. And when a direction is determined, it really needs to have consensus of the entire committee. And so that's, all going to take some time. So the thought with this last meeting has been that the, what we've gotten by way of contributions from the TIDC consult, by way of providing us with some initial, initial view of what the system looks like today, plus some economic analysis that will probably, probably beneath this process to do a more in-depth analysis of criminal justice system. As we've looked at other examples from around the country, quite often, you know, you, you see the issue right here, you see the problems right here, but the real problem lies somewhere over here, or somewhere over here in the system. It's not obvious, I mean, to the naked eye, you can't see it right away. But if you go through that analysis, you can see how, how those points began and ended. And, and pretty soon you go, okay, that's really what we need to fix over here, it's not this. If we fix this, this itself will fix. So we are looking at some options now that we'll want to present back to the county and all counties for a more in-depth analysis of the system. There may be some no-cost assistance available, but even so, again, it likely is going to involve some investment on part of the county or counties to get a good study done. And this would have to be a study that nobody, done by nobody, somebody that nobody knows. It has no connection to the county or counties that we're talking about, that has no vested interest in what the outcome is, other than they're going to come in, that's what they do, they come in, they look at the situation, and they don't have friends, they don't have influences in, in the area, they just, they can do an unbiased, unvaried study of what is going on here, and provide me with some recommendations, and then they walk away. And then it's up to the county or counties to decide what to do with that information. Now, something that we've been really working on, I, I said, we, we started off being a PDO, Potter County PDO Select Committee, but really what it needs to be is just the indigent defense committee, because it needs to involve strong participation by Potter County, strong participation by Randall County, and we've had good participation by Armstrong County throughout. Plus, we want to make sure that we keep all the stakeholders engaged with this, the, the private defense attorneys, the judges, the, the private citizens, to make sure that we can, we can get the best outcome of the study, and whenever the recommendation is dropped to the courts for consideration of, their consideration, that we're giving you the very best recommendation possible as to what can be done for the long-term benefit of the indigent defense system here in the county. So although we had opportunity to wrap quickly and go after $6 million, you know, Kruton said, just wait just a second. Let's really make sure we know what we're jumping into before we go there. Because we can come back this next, this next year and do the same thing, but we'll have a lot more information to work with at that point in time. Or maybe something else, make it be a different form of system. And what we're really looking at right now, and this is why the, the moniker of PDO Select Committee from the out, from the start may have been a better problem, is because we're making some assumptions at that point in time as to what really needed to be done. Well, it's PDO committee, so we're going to bring a PDO. No, that's not it. But at the end of the day, we, the, the committee really needs to come up with a goal statement that fits, it's not just, we want to make sure that we've got the best indigent defense system we can afford for the indigent defendants in Potter, Randall, and Armstrong County. We've got to come up with a goal statement that we can work towards, that we can then build a strategy around, that really says what it is they want, what the committee members want, because you've got a mixed bag of perspectives on that committee, whether it's to maintain the defense attorney community here in the three county area, whether it's to provide, you know, the best possible defense services that you can to indigent defendants here in the three county area, whatever the case might be, we have to be able to rally around a goal statement that makes sense for the system, for the stakeholders, and for the jurisdictions involved in all this. One thing the commissioner and I have been talking about, we hope that we can get this set up in not too distant future, I understand that you guys learned a lot about what was going on with phone calls from people going, what's going on? That when we were getting to that point in the process where we were kind of contemplating the submission of that noticement. Well, we need to do a better job, this thing has moved really quick, but we need to do a better job with the PDU involved and, and informed, we need to do the same with Randall County, we need to do the same with Armstrong County. And one of the things that we've discussed is maybe having a session with three quarters where we can bring everybody up to do it in some detail as to what's, what's been going on and why. And also say, here's where we think, here's where the committee, I should say, thinks that this process ought to go. So you can start understanding that and contemplating that. And if there's going to be any costs associated with that down the road, you got to, you're also going to have to know that, you don't want to hear about that on August the 1st when you're trying to wrap up your budget, nor do you just want to hear that without any, and oh, by the way, here's what you're going to get with your investment type of information. So those are things that we're going to be working on for the next six to nine months. Don't know if this time next year you'll be in any better position than before with the discretionary funding that's available through the TIDC. But hopefully we'll, we'll be able to provide you with recommendations to move forward with whatever the case might be, whether it's, whether it is that PDO, whether it is a MAC or there's some other, there's some other answer there to fix the issues that have been identified, and by that point in time, identified in some detail. Commissioner, is there anything else you want to add?
You know that this is a long night, I know that this onset, that's, you asked, so I could, again, say, you know, I think it's all initial onset, we were basically focusing on Pollock County. We actually got into this, and we started again, state home rules and, we saw very clearly that the concerns evolved more toward tri-county indicators of all the interests that were certainly going on. And as we move toward trying to meet it there, and so, so clearly that there's still a lot of work to be done, and getting a lot of input in from all of the various entities. So we're at that point now, and to put it succinctly, to the case, that an analysis in depth is where we probably should be, and we can observe that we're where we think we want to go, and where we are in the best interest of all the courts concerned.
Carson, when this came to us, and we voted to go ahead and make a statement, as you stated, as Commissioner Bonner stated, that it was Potter County. Then all of a sudden, those of us that weren't involved at all, other than the initial stage, found out Randall County was involved, and Armstrong County was involved. Did they go through the same process we did to vote to yes participate?
They've been asked to participate on the select committee process, and the reason being is because commissioners do that.
Did the commissioners approve that?
No, they haven't. But they, it's kind of been a kind of come-and-go kind of situation here with the stakeholders, because the stakeholders are quite much larger than the 20-some-odd people serving. And you've got district courts in this area that serve all three counties, you've got judges that are serving all three counties. And as that's discussion is about, the benefits, the benefits of whatever is, will extend to all three counties, because it's, it's an organization that serves all three counties. So we do need to, here, Commissioner, we need to, even as we're stepping back to take a more thorough look at the system, we have to look at more thoroughly at the select committee structure, process, you know, heretofore it's just been advisory committee. You know, it's, it, just a group of guys that come in and speak their mind, and then, you know, that's shared with somebody higher up. But if this is going to become more of a three-county type organization, maybe it needs to take on more of a form of structure. I mean, that's up to, let's see, that can just be a Potter County decision. It's going to have to be all three counties, which is why I think we would move all three counties to, and talk about this situation, understand first of all, we've got an issue. They all three share a common issue, and there's an opportunity for all three to work towards common solutions.
I think we're leaning towards that, in court, my last meeting, I was encouraged to see that the championship commission there, he was not able to be there, but he assigned one of the commissioners, should have died, who was there, and so after getting, was one with the assistant district attorney, Robert Love, who had been in a number of meetings. So they've been, just the request to the court has went out, and as John indicated, I think it would move us to, to put the application or the invitation out to all of the courts and to brief and give them as much input and interest as courts, what has been going on, and the information that is at one time. I think that's made very, very distinct in doing so.
It would be interesting to know what Kristi got involved, because I talked to, to Ernie, how to sell a judicial conference lens, and he is very much against, very much.
And at the same time, it's, the DA's, it's sure, are very much for it in the interest of doing something, not necessarily PDO, but certainly in the interest of changing where we are now, because I think we all agree, and we're all in with it, but the system that we have now is not the same.
When I was there, I talked to another county judge who has a county about the same size as ours, and they did this, and it worked well for them, and, but it only cost them a little over a million dollars.
Well, you know, right now, it's, it's kind of hard for anybody to know what they're against, because there's nothing to be against or for. I mean, the fact of the matter is, you're not going to be able, you know, to create those divisions of, okay, here's what we're going to do, I'm for it, I'm against it, kind of thing. We're going to have to go through that study analysis, or that in-depth analysis to figure out what the solution is, or at least a recommended solution, I think. It may be a PDO, maybe a MAC, it may be a combination of the two, maybe I'll just forget about it, let's go. I mean, it could be a combination of all four of those things. But I mean, there's, the, the prejudice that came out was it's a PDO, it's, and all these defense attorneys are going to be on the sidewalk, and, you know, holding signs, you know, we'll work for food, kind of thing. But that's not the case. I mean, there's so many different creepy sessions flying around us about this thing that, you know, well, where's that coming from? So really, we need to clear the air, really. And, and you're right, Commissioner, we need to make sure that we've got all the jurisdictions that potentially, and Judge Reed's been, he was, has been every meeting with the exception of this last week. Randall County has been represented at each of these meetings, at committee meetings. So they've all informally, as, as part of a advisory committee, they've all been informally involved with this. And so the information's flowing back, it should be flowing back to, to the, to the local governing bodies, but I think we need to do a better job of that. That's why I think if we could work towards having a three-county at least, now, I don't know, town, what the, what the state law says about them, but if we could have a three-county kind of education session where we can bring them up to speak on what's going on, because it really is, you don't think about it. I, I don't know how much y'all think about it, I wasn't thinking about it, but it's, it's going to become an issue, and it's going to become a costly issue if you don't address it. And so, anyway, that's, that's our recommendation.
We are working on getting all the commissioners together.
Oh, good.
Yeah. Are you, yeah. Shannon, Howie, how's that going? Getting all the commissioners, their all emails together and giving?
We have almost all of them, some of them don't have one.
Are you saying all, Judge?
You mean Randall?
Randall, Armstrong, and all of them.
Okay, and so everyone can leave, and what, mostly, you need to talk about it, but to what?
Well, what I would, what I would propose to do is to get the experts in, to tell you what's going on.
So John, I do have a couple of questions on the study. I'm not sure if this is an appropriate time to kind of, just at a high level, again, I'm not on that, the committee. But I did see on this study referencing a median caseload of 1.2 above the recommended guidelines, and seeing a misdemeanor rate significantly lower in terms of getting representation, so a high self-representation percentile, about 67% of people are choosing to self-represent.
We have a misdemeanor.
Right, is there, is there a reason for that? Have we, are we just, is this just information out there, or do we know any root cause analysis? Any of that information yet?
That's part of what we have, I mean, that's, people understand that in Potter County it's got a mutual, usually, I would say, right.
A usually lot, I would say, pro se.
Pro se.
Okay.
Basically, I would say, probably. So anyway, that's one of the things we have to explore, as to why is that, for deserved reason, for there may be a natural, again, in that sense, or maybe by that something we need to look at and fix in the situation. But those, that's, I mean, that's a good eye, Commissioner, because those are what, that's one of the issues that we're going to have to explore more deeply to see why that is.
I don't know what's, what's going on with, I do manage recordings a lot, because you kind of, all the judges, you know. So what, you know, last thing to do, so I don't do them at the percentage rate of people doing, presenting, we sell some tech. doing, representing themselves and taking a plea, it's been 100% until now. All of a sudden, they change, say, oh, in the court for attorney. So it's like 50% of them are in court for attorney. All of a sudden, I don't know what's happening. If they've gotten word that, oh.
We're doing, yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't know. I don't, I don't know. And, you know, in fairness, they're ish in, you know, it's gets a bunch of the cheese, but, you know, even if you stay with the same system that you've got, it may, it may benefit, I know not too long ago, you raised the rates for your felony cases and misdemeanor cases and stuff like that, but, you know, listen, they're still getting nothing to represent these guys. And so they're basically giving them what they're getting paid for. Not an awful lot of, not an awful lot of time and energy going into, you know, well, you get $400 for representing that guy. Well, I mean, after an hour and a half, you've already seen what you're wanting to bill rates. And so anyway, those are things that we're all, we're going to have to look at as part of this process.
And then John, also.
Just to the record, we did increase that. Oh, you did? By the judges.
The judges did that right in the middle of the budget.
We're not, we're not.
Well, and that's, see, there's, there's some other benefits to doing this too because we need to make sure that all stakeholders are all aware of all processes so that you can't just decide in the middle of a budget year to go out and, well, we're buying new cars for all the judges you guys got a paper. No, that's not the way the system works. So we need to get more cohesion, you know, cohesiveness between what the judges do and we're finding out an awful lot about that, which has been very interesting. What all the, what all the components of the system do and as they work together and where they can conflict, such as raising rates in the middle of a budget year, kind of thing, to where we can make that system work more seamlessly and work together towards that goal, that goal statement that we have to have come up with for this process.
So John, a couple more follow-up questions, if I may. In this study, it also references in terms of scope, 75% of the cases would be handled by whatever, we call it, whatever it is, versus 25% external. Is there a reason for that model? That surprised me.
Well, they're, I mean, they quoted conflict of interest cases in there, that sort of thing. There, the one thing about the PEO, and this is, it's interesting because TIDC with this is not really interesting, TIDC with as you're going together, they develop standards for caseload limits. And so, you know, they, they basically say that when you reach that limit and you don't take any more cases, then things just need to be farmed out to somebody else or if you have a conflict of interest base or something of that sort. So they're still, they're still going to be, indeed, to have outside defense attorneys, even if you were to go to PEO. I'm not, I'm not going to create any assumptions, but if you were to go to PEO based type of system, you'd still need to be looking at some outside assistance with that.
And then it also mentions other counties and regional PEOs. Is it possible to get a list of that? I'm sure it's available out there, it's good to have as, just as an additive to this. And then Model A that's referenced in here, which is what you spoke to the three kind of prong counties. One of my baseline assumptions, I don't know if this is correct, is based on the grant funding, it looks like population is a key driver to that in terms of how much money could be allocated. Is that part of the thinking to pull these counties together and thus a bigger population and a potential visitor grant?
Well, there are two different grant programs that TIDC wants that annual disbursement that all counties get. That's more of the population base kind of thing. With this discretionary funding, you basically come up with what it's going to take to create that office regardless of whether you're in a county of 50,000 or 500,000. And then if they've got the funding, they commit to paying, assisting with those costs throughout the first four years on an 80, it's on a declining contribution scale of 80, 60, or 80, 60, 40, you can point, so, but at the end of the day, it's 50%. Now, Kerry's been contributing to this process in very big ways. We've been looking at those numbers and they assume that what the actual numbers would be because those numbers are going to say, well, those guys got to have computers or those investigators have to have vehicles. And so the other ancillary costs that really add up, that would inflate that cost fairly noticeably. So we're going to have to try to bring all those things together so you're dealing with nothing but facts when you decide what you want to do, if you want to do anything.
I do have two more follow-up that then I'll be done, Commissioner. So I'm remembering our initial agreement with PRPC and now this sounds like a multi-year initiative. Did we do, we had a contract, was it for one year? I can't remember our contract for your services. Did we not do a dinner local on this? Is it, was it for one year?
I was, it's for a lump sum.
Okay, and in that lump sum, I, I just don't know if we need to be betting this for budget coming up.
No, I totally, Commissioner.
And then in terms of formal action, Judge, did I hear it's your office that's trying to organize the other commissioners and find one magic day that works for everyone? Which is probably the hardest.
Yeah, where people aren't going to Montana, are experts.
But is the idea to bring this group together, have a briefing of this nature and then ask them to, their ask for action is to at least formally appoint someone to this committee? Should they choose to participate or not? And I think that's what Commissioner Church is.
They've already had someone.
Yeah, but I think it's very informal, which is what I heard Commissioner Church's concern. I want to speak for you, sir. That's what I heard.
There was a full invitation that went out to them. They've been serving since day one, the district attorney's office, and just recently, this past meeting, very curious that the auditor was there and crunching the numbers as well. So, but in the systems as an official version that you communicate, that would probably gear up more of that from the court, from the side, would actually generate.
And I think that would be good to just have under our, under our belt of some undertone that the courts, that the governing body has chose to appoint whomever their appointees are. Maybe the net effect is zero because they're the same people that are serving now, but then the court has taken action, which we have taken action, that signals some type of at least commitment to the discussion.
Well, and certainly if you could organize the three counties getting together, that could certainly be something on the gym to consider. But I think the biggest thing is that all three courts at the same time are hearing what's going on, what's been done and what could happen so that none of this comes as a surprise six months from now. And it's really important, I think, that everybody knows what's happened.
Yet the other creepy thing is what we need is to be confident that the information we're getting is unbiased. And it has to be an outside group has no relationships with anybody in, with any of the parties.
That's, that's the true mark of a consultant, is somebody that doesn't live here, doesn't know anybody. May not know anything at all, but as long as he's not around here, they're okay. So anyway, that's, those are the things that we're, we're actually working right now, just, just so you know. Trying to put together a scope for, for a study like this so we can start pricing that figure out what it's going to cost. I mean, and again, everyone's going to have a different, well, I want this, I want that, I want this kind of stuff explored. And there's a lot of good stuff that you can put for those that will just benefit the criminal justice system here in general, I think. And not so, some of our judges have said, let's not get too vision and look at just one issue, because here's an opportunity, maybe to do something a little bit broader. And as you broaden that view, yes, it's going to cost a little bit more, but I think there's going to be some opportunities where you see efficiencies, even price of efficiencies in criminal justice system that you've never seen before. They can ultimately save very much. Somebody can do things better for everybody.
So go around here, I was going to ask you.
Number one, you mentioned that we have these attorneys that retire and that might be a problem in the future for caseloads, that kind of stuff. And you mentioned in this model that we need 24 additional attorneys. Where are they going to come from?
See, that's the, that's the conundrum in all this because you've got folks that are dropping, that are aging out of the system and everyone's, everyone on that committee, no offense to the Chamber of Commerce, but they go, who wants to go down there? Who wants it? Someone coming out of some big, high-tech league college or something like that. But, but then again, you've got folks that are going through, through the university system because they want to come out, they've got passion for representing indigent defendants. That's the field of law that they want to go into. And really in Texas right now, there's not a lot of opportunity for them to apply their trade as indigent, defensive attorneys. Because unless you're getting into this private system like we have here today. But as far as being, working in the PEO, there's like 26, I think, in the state of Texas right now. 26 covering, and maybe about a tenth of the counties, so the 254 counties. So there's not an awful lot of opportunity. So we've been told, Commissioner, that there are people just chomping at the bit as they come out of college to find a situation like this where they can get in on the ground floor and do what they have always felt that, you know, God wanted them to represent.
Some other issues that I had, the numbers that you give here, do they include the Federation of Annual Relief, SIC, the House of Insurance, all those things?
Those are, these numbers over here have. But that did not slip by Kerry's attention whatsoever. So, I mean, that's why, again, that, those numbers are booked together by folks that have a general idea of how counties operate, don't have an in-depth understanding of how counties operate, but then when it gets in the hands of people who have an in-depth understanding, those numbers tend to.
So. Last, Commissioner, these grants, and what happens at the end of the grant?
Well, you're paying for your system right now and you're paying for your, for your system with some, some assistance each year from TIDC. So in answer to your question, probably be the same thing. Now, there's some things that are going on that I'm not at liberty to speak about right now that might invite some additional attention, but at the end of the day, here in Texas, now in other states, the state pays for indigent defense costs. Texas always does things a little bit different, so now it's left up to the counties to do this. But the fact of the matter is that, you know, once all that grant money goes away, then whatever you're left with is what you're paying for, which again is why it's important for all three counties to come to some consensus as to what you ultimately wanted and what's going to be the best benefit for everybody. And that again, was stated clearly during the course of the last two meetings, is that we have to have all three counties.
My last question. Have we looked at tweaking the system that we have right now?
That would be one of the options that will be looked at.
I think that might be really need to be looked at.
But we still have the issue of, okay, so we allow the attorney to represent defendant because those guys are getting old. So we still have to, we still have to think about repricing the system. And the nice thing about, the nice thing about working for a PEO here is if you, if you go to school and you rack up all those tuition costs and everything, you can get forgiven. Coming to work for a government organization like this, your college, your university debt be forgiven, which is another incentive.
And we'll say also that the mental health component, the mental health component is also being sort of vigorously discussed in the era and we also appreciate that representative pool price, it's also engaging with and actually carried along with representative.
We have people in the audience that might want to talk to this issue. You know, that I had a couple of calls, that people said they wanted to be here and I reminded them of the reason today. What's caught up and identify yourself and tell us your concerns.
Good morning. Hi, my name is Melissa Anderson. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak this morning. This is really the first, I'm hearing a lot of it, other than these little bits and pieces I've gotten here and there. I've had this opportunity to speak with Mr. Keel on the phone about this some as well. And so I appreciate you taking the time to slow the process down at least, to get all of the information that you need in order to make a humorous decision such as this. I just want to make sure that, as already has been said, that this is a really unbiased process. I know that there are some really strong opinions from PRPC and from others on the committee about what needs to happen and I just want to make sure that the process is unbiased going forward. And my other concern is this, is just as typical in our society today, there's a lot of rhetoric that is used. And if we're not careful with our rhetoric, we can easily start to believe something that may not be true. So when we hear things like, we're not getting good defense, you know, representation now, these guys are getting old, we're going to wheel them in, those sorts of things, I just want to make sure that we're taking the opportunity to maybe step back and understand that what is being told to us may not necessarily always be the case. Probably just with every profession, are there bad actors in the bunch? Absolutely. But I would say for the most part, criminals get good defense representation in Potter and Randall County. And so when you have just a group of guys sitting around making a decision for three counties, I just want to make sure that our rhetoric is such that we don't just automatically assume something just because we hear it. And that's very easy to do in this day and age and so.
I can assure you that if you, if you had been probably giving more of our meetings, you would have seen a very robust conversation.
Sure. And I would love to come to those meetings. I wasn't aware of them for a while and then I was told that they were closed meetings, but if they are open meetings for the public to attend, I would appreciate the opportunity to be able to attend.
There will be, there will be open meetings, but the select committee is very hard to ensure that all the input that is coming in is coming to those that represent the community, to the public. We don't get a lot of, as I said, collateral noise from the public per se that sort of delay our very narrow focus conversations that we all have.
Ms. Anderson, can we have your address for the record and who you represent?
Sure, I represent myself.
You're just a concern.
Yeah, I'm, in full disclosure, I'm a resident of Randall County. So I'll be going to the Randall County meeting as well, but my address is 3522 Barclay, Amarillo, Texas, 791.
And are you, are you kin to someone that has been in the jail, that's received these services or to an attorney or?
No, I'm related to an attorney.
Okay, all right, so just citizen representation kind of through that process. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, just sort of.
Morning.
Morning.
I did, my name is Jeff Hill. I'm a local defense attorney. I do appointment work. I did not come prepared to give any remarks this morning. I did not realize that there would be an opportunity to give remarks, so forgive me for not having probably an organized presentation. Commissioner Kelly, you asked a question about costs. Who would bear the cost, the county would. When the grant fund goes away, that's $6 million bucks, that's sitting in your lap to pay for that. Well, I assumed, I assumed that was more.
It's our cost today.
I assumed that was more of a rhetorical question, but you asked it, so. Regarding the attorney pool, Mr. Keel said that there are attorneys out there just dying to get here. It's God's calling on their life and they feel it and man, they can't wait to get here. Well, number one, where are they? Why are they not here now? Number two, from discussions I have heard, I went to the last meeting that was held, I was also speaking to Jeff Blackburn about this. My understanding is that Jeff Blackburn is the one who's telling the committee that there is this pool of eager young lawyers just dying to be public defenders who can't wait to get here. I had a personal one-on-one conversation with Jeff Blackburn after this meeting and dissented greatly from what he was saying, is agree with him. His exact words to me were, hey, this is good for us, this, this is a win-win because when the criminal defendants find out what they're getting for a public defender, a young inexperienced attorney, they're going to come hire us private attorneys and there's two to three million dollars out there in the county that these people will find to pay. that these people will find to pay for retaining counsel. So I don't know exactly what Mr. Blackburn is telling the commission or the committee that he's on. My understanding, he's pushing this line of, "All these attorneys want to get here in private." That's not what he's saying. And I would sign an affidavit, I would go under oath, that is what he told me after this meeting. With respect to oversight, and we're all a bunch of deadbeats, we don't do our job, we have to enter the state bar. Okay, so this is not a situation where there's no oversight, we're just a bunch of cowboys running around doing what we want to do. We have standards that we have to meet for the state bar. If we don't meet those, we'll be called upon by the state bar, we'll lose our license, and we'll be finding something else to do. So I assure you, the vast majority of us are doing our job, and we're doing competitive representation. If we weren't, we wouldn't have our license to continue applying our trade. And that's really all I have for this morning, except in comparison, I do appreciate your time.
I appreciate it. Thank you. I think some of those words, still taking somewhat of context in every meeting. So there's no one individual driving the existence of a P D O or MAG or any other group. We just believe in the, in the contents and the facts buried out, the numbers buried out, that we have a system that is really not sustainable if it continues the way it is right now. We're going to look at all the different variables out there. No one is pushing in the meaning that we have a pool of rotten attorneys, or attorneys that are not doing, are not efficient enough to do, say, went to school and have a license for. But we do have a number of facts that bear out that adequate representation has not buried out to the extent that we would like for it to be. And that's what we want to be very keen to look at. There are some excellent attorneys in Potter County, Gravemo County, Palm Street, that represent individuals and do a very good job. But all the things being added into the pool and the numbers and what we're looking at, there is deference for us to look at if we can have an improved system. And I assure you that there's not any one individual that is driving this to the extent where he or she would prefer it to go. We're looking at things that are going to be in the best interest of all three counties where they are participating and ensuring that we get adequate representation that the sixth amendment certainly requires for all the individuals to select.
No, and I don't doubt anything. If I, if I was not clear in my remarks, I was not trying to indicate that there was a single person trying to drive anything. I was just addressing or attempting to address the fact that there's this, this eager young pool of lawyers just waiting to get here to be saviors of the, of the universe and, you know, public...
I don't see, I think those words were, were descriptive in the way you put it. But we have a person, one individual, that there are opportunities for attorneys to get here and join us, where adequate ground for and be a part of our... It's a, it's a, we have got that achievement, so...
Yeah.
Yeah.
No one, no one...
Yeah, just build it, Bill.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Melissa, can I add one more thing?
Yes, ma'am. Did you say you're an attorney? No, ma'am, I'm related to an attorney.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Well, and keep in mind, too, anything I ever say to this court is a collection of what I hear. That being, none of this is, I don't care what, I mean, I care about the process because that's what you guys have to do, is oversee the process. Where that process gets, that's up to y'all. We don't have dogging.
Okay, so the next step is to convene with all the commissioners, or we all have something else to do.
Yeah, we need to get that organized. And, and we need to, you know, judge, we need to find a good day when we can have the folks that can come and talk to you honestly about what's going on, at least from their perspective. So they can bring you up to speed with what they're seeing. You can ask the probing questions, Commissioner, that you want to. Keep in mind that the cost is probably going to be the county's. And, I mean, that's, it's always been, so that's not going to change.
And we can have this meeting at P R P C.
We can have this meeting at the plan.
Okay, we'll get, we'll get on that.
All right.
Okay, John, thank you so much. Thank you, Commissioner, and the committee.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Number seven, Bario neighborhood plan discussion and recommendation related to the city council initially. Bario neighborhood plan prepared by the city, and all planning department, the board.
Again, why didn't you see it all again?
Excuse me?
So you might recall the last time I could go into you all, a little over a year ago, we were having the same conversation about the official inaugural neighborhood plan that the city council worked together to produce, and that was really the marketing. So I'm back to talk to you today about the Bario neighborhood, that neighborhood that we're focused on. And we are approaching very quickly the culmination and adoption of this document. And so my goal today is to give you sort of a brief overview of the final document. The final draft is on our city's website, amarillo.gov. It's been on the website for about five weeks now, and I've been taking comments through that effort, as well as the public engagement process, which I'll summarize for you. So to begin, I have a slide here showing the target area that we have been examining. This neighborhood is just around nine-hundred-and-fifty acres. As you can see there on the slide, its boundaries are the N S and F Road to the north and to the west. It heads south as far as southeast twenty-ninth. And then you have South Ross and South Coast Page boundary on the east. The majority of this neighborhood is made up of several subdivisions, which are shown on the slides there, which were brought into the city around nineteen-hundred and nineteen-ten, that time period. So most of these lots have existed in their location for quite some time. And I mentioned the public engagement process. After we did our first neighborhood plan process, we did some tweaking and organizing of a process that will be our template for the future neighborhood plans to come, using what we've used from that first endeavor. So this was a tighter and a shorter time period for public engagement, with the main goal to be to keep that interest moving throughout the process. And so that public engagement included a series of three different neighborhood live meetings. We started that with what we call our kickoff meeting, which is initially to welcome the neighborhood, to show them some of the data that we've worked on, to ask for their help in moving forward, to get different people to volunteer for our advisory committee. We also have what we call our check-in meeting, which is about the halfway point of this process. And that is indicated on the slide here as well. The intention of that meeting is really to review the work to date and make sure that we aren't overlooking anything or missing anything, and let the neighborhood see what has been happening. And then the final meeting is where we have our availability, as we call it, of the main features of the plan for the public to know where the entire plan is for their common and emphasis. I spoke just a moment ago about volunteers. We have a volunteer group, we call our Neighborhood Advisory Committee. And we had six different meetings with that committee. One thing that we have done differently in this plan document is we've summarized the engagement process to sort of capture that for posterity. So if there's ever any questions about the amount of engagement that was done and where it was at, that is captured in the plan at this time. This is a slide that we used from the very beginning meetings throughout the process. It was really important to make sure that the public could see the process from beginning to end and see where at each meeting we were in this process. So it's a five-phase process, as you can see there, starting initially with some preparations, some data gathering, a pretty lengthy and intensive documentation period and all the period of our committee, looking at some of the analysis comes next, unveiling the plan, and then, of course, now we're in phase five of the adoption phase. And I'll talk more about the parties that have been involved, and that's just a moment. So the plan document itself begins with that public engagement summary that I just mentioned. It also captures, as you saw on the last neighborhood plan, the existing conditions of the neighborhood. We've gone a little bit more in depth this time, using not only census data, but also looking at factors and indicators that are important in these efforts, including things like property values, looking at things like code violations and that sort of data. The priority areas and rules were really born of the advisory committee, the staff. Our role was really to facilitate the discussions, to help draw out plans that were made and help refine those with the group. But really, these are the words of this committee themselves. There's also, like the North Heights Plan, a series of land use guidance principles. And these are to be utilized by the city council and the planning and zoning commission as they are making some decisions in this area. For example, one of the main things that it talks about, really looking for, is compatibility in these decisions, making sure that they are decisions that are defensible in the long-term health of the neighborhood and are not based specifically on the proposal, but are based on the fabric of the neighborhood and how well the support or does not support what we're trying to achieve. And then, of course, the last chapter of this plan contains the phasing and implementation steps. And so that is a breakdown, and I'll show you an excerpt of what that looks like in a moment, of those uses, those areas and goals. So there were a few sort of summary points that we made that were takeaways from the demographic work that we lived in it. Some of these are surprising, others are not so much, and really comparable, where I suspected, one being that the area is trending slightly older, and that has been trending over the last seven to ten years. The median income is fairly flat in this neighborhood, we see a little change either up or down. Of course, we have noticed that the data does bear a correlation between poverty levels as much as the census bureau and the poverty values in that area. Latino residents make up the majority of this neighborhood. And at least half of the homes in this area are owner-occupied. And that was a big source of discussion with the various citizens and residents that came out to speak with us. The population in this neighborhood is also majorly stable for the most part. There have been some decreases in the overall population per household, but overall has been fairly flat. The majority of the code violations, and you can see this reflected in the actions to this, those are some things like we use junk vehicle, so there have been nuisance type of complaints. There are a lot of different historic interest sites that we'll be looking at moving forward. A little different from the North Heights neighborhood, where we saw a large amount of vacant land. The borrowed neighborhood is actually a lot of office, and there's a little vacant land in this neighborhood. The focus there will be reuse and revitalization of existing sites. So there's some other points there as well that I won't focus on too much. Not surprisingly, the high-value parcels of this neighborhood tend to be focused on all the major gateways, including Ross Coast Page and the Four Seasons. So there were six priority areas that the committee, working with the staff in the neighborhood, came up with as their focus. Those include infrastructure, specifically looking at multi-modal transportation and the condition of alleys in the neighborhood, the identity and amenities of the neighborhood. That includes everything from the culture and the history of the area, really focusing on key gateways into the area and defining that neighborhood in a clearer way. We also look at non-residential development and maintenance. And as I just mentioned, with the different code violations that are frequent in this neighborhood, the development and maintenance of the area is, of course, a major concern for people that live and work in the neighborhood, as well as people passing through the appearance factor. Neighborhood health is another focus in the plan, both looking at nutrition and healthcare opportunities. Neighborhood safety was a major focus, and that includes everything from traffic safety to the law enforcement aspect and crime. And then last, with the development and maintenance of the residential neighborhoods, helping to improve those aesthetics and maximizing the appeal to bring in and attract new residents to the area. And this is that excerpt I mentioned from the very last chapter of the plan, which outlines the goals and actions, and whether they are short, moderate, or long-term goals. That was based on a prioritization exercise that we did with the neighborhood. And so, again, those priorities reflect how they weigh in on this. There are several steps that the neighborhood can do next, and we talked about this at our final meeting, which was on February twenty-sixth. And that includes mainly getting involved as the major thinking, everything from boards and commissions, helping the neighborhood to mobilize and organize. Luckily, this area has a great start on that. There is a contingent of folks that's very well organized, and has already been having some of these initial conversations. So helping them build on that is going to be a focus for us. Looking also at ways to make sure that we are communicating clearly back and forth with that neighborhood. And again, I'm asking that there has been a good template for that set. It's just going to be maintained and occurring upon that. So the schedule for adoption is shown here. As I mentioned, our final meeting was in February. We did take this and present it to the planning and zoning commission back in mid-March. And they did recommend approval of this document. Their recommendation along with the words will be presented to the city council. And so here we are today to talk about your recommendation on this. We'll be having some brief discussion tomorrow with the city council, and we'll be bringing it to the board their first and second readings on the third and the tenth of March. And so we will be moving through, sorry, April. It's not by so fast. So by the April tenth, we should have this plan. And just to remind you what that means, this actually becomes a piece of the city's adopted comprehensive plan. That plan is utilized in everything from setting policy, making zoning decisions, to making financial decisions and priorities, and then also looking at the level of service that is provided to the area. And so with that, we are just asking for your recommendation. Any questions that you have, we're happy to take those back in this presentation.
One thing I would add to some of A J.'s comments, and, you know, I work on the subcommittee with A J. directly, Judge has worked alongside Commissioner Vaughn as well. But two key components, I would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to say kudos to this court, because this started with a little seventy-five thousand dollars. And I've said this in public forums, if this went to the city, was actually cut the first time around. And brought it back to the table for a potential match. So that hundred-and-fifty thousand has now turned into several million because there is a bond, part of the bond that did get passed, that some of that infrastructure is being slated. So I just want to take a minute to say thank you to this court, because we didn't know exactly what our ask was, and it was seventy-five thousand dollars. And so it has turned into a very strategic move for the city. Something very symbolic that has happened, and I think we miss it, I miss it, is we have the plan. Nothing like this has ever happened for this city. These are plans for neighborhoods that we know need attention. But just to have a strategic plan, to have this organized in a document, has never been done in the city. And it started with North Heights here, slated to go for two other locations. So I know we're very busy, and we get busy being busy, but this is very, very significant to the people that live in this area. And so I just, I wanted to take a minute to just highlight that, because it really does have an impact. And in the community, what, what I often get is, "Well, here we go, Mercy, what's this now? What's, what's different? And what makes this different is that it appends to that comprehensive plan." And so that is very different than a study that we do. We're all guilty of getting these studies, and they sit on the shelf, and when we need them, ten years later, we pull them back. This is very different. So when we're asking committee members to sit on this, we, we say, "This is what makes this different. It has to be vetted fiscally," is all, I mean, policy, absolutely, but fiscally. Anytime you've balled money right, that's where some real change happens. So those are big tips, and I just wanted to take a minute, because I know we don't always have an opportunity to do that, just, just say thank you to each one of them.
A J., I want to thank you. You've done an outstanding job, and you're on this, and I really appreciate everything you've done. Can I get this, do you have this in print?
We can get that for you.
Could, could I get that just from our...
Would you prefer a draft, or would you prefer to file a copy?
A copy would be great. Sure, we can make it. No, we need to take action, okay?
I think it would be a good, it doesn't require our action, but I think it would be a good sentiment to take to the council for their working session.
Can I ask a question? There's a lot of the implementation steps that you've talked about. How's that going to be?
So the implementation steps sort of fall into three categories. One is policy, which is a little less of a budget. The second is operational. There's been a directive from our city manager's office since the beginning of the North Heights process that these neighborhoods get a higher level of service. And so we're currently tracking that. The third piece is where the funding really comes into play, and that is on specific projects. So that'll come from a combination of our capital improvement dollars. We're actually in the process right now of preparing that capital improvement for the next five years, and the bond that is, I think you should have mentioned earlier, that was total five-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars for five-year period, each year for five-year period. That is intended to be clear, not just for the Bario neighborhood, for all of the neighborhoods that are being studied, but those two...
I can see that for the, you know, the alleyways and stuff. One of the things that was just one of the high priorities was weeds and junk cars and stuff like that. That's an individual responsibility. That's an individual responsibility.
And a lot of this will be part of the neighborhood's responsibility as well. And so we've had this theme that we carried from the beginning of, this only works if you come to the table and put work towards it as well. It's not the city's responsibility solely to carry out these things.
Precisely, and I think that's very keen to bring that up, because that was part of the ongoing conversation. We were involved, even in our last meeting at North Heights, we planned, that was a very aggressive discussion relating accountability on the community and certainly the state. I'm impressed by everybody working together, all entities, county, city, and I think the citizenry sees that, so I think we're presenting those out to the, uh, the, 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 the.
It's like cooperation will be fully apparent now. And the other thing, speaking to your funding question, that has to be a message moving forward and a reminder for all of us, is that that money that we just talked about is not going to go forever. And so really making this plan successful means the ongoing commitment of our decision-makers. And so we're going to help as well as our city councils help in making those decisions. After this, all the things that you have has got to give priority. And so making this part of the plan, as you mentioned, really forces us to have that conversation every year at the budget time and not let that fall through the cracks.
What's done, what is lost for us?
Los Palos. There's a, there's an organization that is in, in, in East Amarillo called Los Palos. And so a lot of times that's used interchangeably. It used to be called originally Edvadio, which is singular, V, versus Los, which is plural, more inclusive. And so it's a neighborhood kind of name that's often referenced for East Amarillo. And I would say that people identify, I, I would speak for the community, I mean, I feel like people certainly identify, that's how they.
That is one of the first conversations that we had, and what do you want to call this? And that's where we have to.
I think those are going to be, I think it takes away from the idea of the person when you call something.
I understand, and we had that conversation, but it was very recent in our.
I move that the recommend, like some of the city.
Second.
Have a motion in favor, Rachel, I can read.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, Jennifer, you're so much. Number eight, Potter County Extension Office, to hear an update from Elizabeth Christian from the County Extension Office, and to also consider an agriculture extension office agent candidate for CEA Agriculture and Natural Resources.
Morning, gentlemen, commissioners, appreciate you all around this to be presented. I'm excited this morning. I would like to present a program that is new to our district and to Potter County. It's called our Master Wellness Volunteer Program. I'm going to give you a flyer. This was handed out before the program, and just to give you an idea of what will be discussed. So this is a volunteer program. It is set up like our Master Gardener Program, which some of you may be familiar with. And that's why I mentioned it, because the Master Wellness Volunteer Program is new to the district and to Potter County. And it already occurred, we did have our training, and I'm excited, because we have 11 trained volunteers. These volunteers are taking control of their own health, and they're a great role model for Potter County. They were trained in areas of nutrition, health and wellness, nutrition management, food safety, physical activity, and more. And I won't go on any further, because I brought a Master Wellness Volunteer this morning to talk to y'all a little bit about what she learned. I'd like to present Deitra Lee. Deitra is a Potter County Master Wellness Volunteer. She was certified as a wellness volunteer after she completed her 40 hours of intense hands-on training that was presented by specialists from Texas A&amp;M, so it's research-based training. She was certified on February 28th. She serves on our Leadership Advisory Board, and as well as our Family and Community Health Advisory Board, and she works for Region 16. So I'm going to turn it over to Deitra Lee, and she'll just talk briefly about the program as a wellness volunteer, and I'll stand.
Good morning, good morning. As Elizabeth said, I'm a Master Wellness Volunteer, recently certified. What drew me to be a Master Wellness Volunteer is the work that I do in my program, which is the Head Start and Head Start Program. And what it's charged to do, I'm a family services specialist, and we are charged with taking care of families and children in our program. We need to make sure that their health is of utmost importance to them, their concerns for their children, for themselves, and, and for the community that they're in. So with us being a trained Master Wellness Volunteer, how I see myself using this quite specifically in my program is for parents and families. My degree is in community health education, so it just kind of goes hand in hand with my passion, my background, and the, the work that I do. What we plan to do in the Head Start Program with Elizabeth Stein, as I've worked with Elizabeth for 15 years through the Head Start Program. And she's been the one who's come and modeled as our extension agent for Potter County, and how to do the types of things that we have now been trained to do also. So she will be there for us for guidance, for backup, to monitor our paperwork, monitor the delivery of services that are given to children and families of our programs. As you know, Head Start is a federally funded program directed for low-income families. So it's a perfect match for us to do this program. My concentration will be with lifestyle choices, medication management, health talk, and a fresh start to health theory, talking about what parents can do for their children, exercise, nutrition, and education, to start this generational path on success for the families.
Deitra, you're in a pressured position to do this Master Wellness Program. Please give that, yes, that's major.
And it wasn't a hard sell. I went to my coordinator and said, we have to do this. I said, okay, so they sent two of us, through myself, family services specialist, and also our nutritionist. So we have two on staff.
You can say what I'm excited about.
Thank you, thank you for your.
Thank you, Judge, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Very good to see you. I am excited about the new program, the new volunteer program. Our volunteer programs in Texas and our extension have been very successful as a whole over the years. And so proud to see us moving in that direction with health and wellness. Enjoy the success we had in the youth program and in our garden program. So excited to see the future of that. My purpose for being here today is to introduce you to our sole finalist for the position of County Extension Agent for Agriculture and Natural Resources in Potter County. So I have with me Ms. Megan Iker. Megan is a graduate of Oklahoma Towne State with her bachelor's degree, and West Texas A&amp;M with her master's degree. Her bachelor's degree is in animal science, her master's degree is in general agriculture. She started a career with extension. When was that, 2002 or so, something like that, as an early program coordinator? And then she went to work for Emerald College, and she quickly worked herself through the ranks in Emerald College. Her reputation as a very hard worker, very dedicated to education, eventually with the position of Dean of Technical Education at Emerald College. So we're excited to attract such fine candidate to the extension. We know she has a track record of success, understanding and passion for agriculture and for horticulture. She doesn't have any formal training in horticulture, but she's had a passion for that all her life. So we've started to work together to establish some potential priorities. One of those will be rebuilding the Master Gardener Program and putting emphasis on that volunteer program that we think is so important to this county. Her goals will be to have a robust program in adult education, focusing, like I said, on horticulture and agriculture, putting on programs for ag producers, not just in this county, but she'll work out of this county, but Emerald Services such a hub for neighboring counties that will attract producers from all over the panhandle to come to the meetings as she can does. So we're very excited about that. Excited to have a full staff in Potter County again, so that'd be great. So before we move any further, I'll stop here and ask if you have any questions for my staff.
I'd like to have Megan maybe address the court, but sure, but maybe she has some information, and you have the floor.
Okay. Anything about yourself on this?
Thank you. I, I think you actually pretty well covered everything. I'm excited to get going. Appreciate your opportunity to serve the county. Well, that's pretty well.
Do you have, what's your last name?
E-I-K-E-R.
You have a very broad, vast experience of, 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 of.
Sure. I started at Emerald College and continuing it, which is very similar to extension mission at a whole. So yes, I do have a very wide array of, of background in education, and I love to learn. Kind of interested in adventuring in the living, but we're both, both universities potentially opening programs. I think that would be something that would be very important for this county to focus on, letting kids to, obviously. So I think there's a lot of opportunity in agriculture that is a foundation of this region, obviously. So I'm excited to be a part of it and make a difference, but it all fits me and my goals. Well, welcome to Potter County. Thank you for having me.
I know you have a good point with Megan Iker, interesting. I have the extension agency for agriculture.
And just a quick comment, just to make a public aware, like Commissioner Church and I, at different times interviewed all the candidates, and so we've had an opportunity to do that and visit one-on-one for about an hour duration each. So that may go without saying, but I wanted to just call that out.
Motion in second, all in favor.
Oh, do the county.
Yeah. Welcome. Thank you so much.
We are going to try to get her started very quickly, within a week or so. So I think maybe Elizabeth can, or turn her around and raise the question, and you get very sure.
I'm excited.
Very good.
Thank you so much. Okay, number nine, shelter maintenance. To consider an export approving agreement for shelter maintenance in Santa Fe Building with TD Industries Inc. In the amount of $2,762 from National IDA, number R dash 150501 dash TX dash ones that would be included by the current.
No, I'll talk about that or do you?
Both can, this is just our annual rules for the Santa Fe building, and we're going with the same vendor that we had in the past, TD Industries Incorporated. And the total due in schedule in agreement amount did not change, so I did invite you to, like, to, to.
Okay, do you have anything else?
Yeah. Would we approve the contract with shelter maintenance at the Santa Fe building?
Have a motion in the second. One of the items to consider in the following government items elections, resignation of Rebecca Slater as part-time deputy clerk, thank you, March 9, 2018, and maintenance and solvency department resignation of Jennifer Michelle Mahon as groundskeeper 1, thank you, 21, assuming that's March 2018. So, any motion?
So, move.
Have a motion, and second, all in favor. My DMV report here in the project, thank you. General report today is 558 individuals in our, one is a gentleman, seven is a female, one is a woman, and seven are males, which represents 85%, because that's what that was, 54% East Marys, 54 Miss Marys, 12%. Any county insurance odds, David?
I just have an information, I, it's not in our accounting insurance, but we did purchase some vehicles for the sheriff's office, fire and rescue, and one for Constable Strata. And they were called well, ready to be in transit, there was a house, so they're in charge of damage to the coverage. So we're having to reorder those. The one for Constable Strata, we are working with the on and to extension, that grant is extended immediately. It looks like also they'll be in January, so just recording now, so, thank you.
They were all broken.
I'm telling you, weird things happen all the time to the San.
It's never happened, but I'll tell you. I just wanted to make it.
Okay, number 14, closed meetings. To convene a closed meeting, it is serial on the following agenda items, as in our chapter 551, Texas Government Code, Code A pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.0711, to receive advice of counsel regarding any litigation. Number 106545 dash A, for the seventh District Court, Potter County versus Richard, the open house. And B pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.0711 and 551.074, to receive advice of counsel regarding employment matter. It is 10:25, we will recess, go to a closed meeting, and be back. Okay, we are back from recess, it is 10:56. And no action was taken, and up session.
Judge, I move then. In cause number 106545 dash A, Potter County versus Richard Odenhoffs. The county attorney be authorized to agree to a final judgment in the amount of $48,528 in favor of Potter County and against Mr. Odenhoffs, which may be satisfied in full by cash payment in the amount of $24,264 within 180 days, otherwise to seek collection from the full amount of the judgment. Second.
Have a motion in the second, all in favor. I can see. Okay. Do the items for next time. Anything? Uh, payroll is, 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 so, okay, it lives three of you here.
They have a conflict with the president.
Over here, okay. So on Allen B, just no action?
No.